All those stupid flavors are not really good Italian.
Lemon, yeah, it's my favorite. I like lemon and cherry mixed together.
As I told Jeff today, when we were talking about dating, when I was a kid, butch across the street told Italianises. It was a nickel for the small one and a twer for the big one. Don't you dare see.
That's a big difference, nickel and twer.
And when you cross the street, did you have to watch out for the wagons?
I crossed the street with my trousers still. No, I didn't have wagons or horses, no.
So has the village announced no parking ordinance?
Yes, we did. We announced it early.
I'm already there.
We did announce it early.
This is an agreement we do every year in the property tax service.
I don't remember doing this before.
Property tax prep.
Michelle has asked to get together prior to next Tuesday night's meeting. How does everybody feel about gathering at five o'clock here?
Next Tuesday?
Five.
Next Tuesday.
Is that too much time?
By Thursday.
We're here Thursday, too.
Pardon me?
We're coming this Thursday also, to meet with Rick.
Right, a meeting with Rick.
This is to answer her questions and have any questions for the tentative budget?
Yep, that's the purpose.
I can do whatever, whatever is needed.
I can do whatever, yeah.
Me too.
Well, how do you?
Five thirty or six.
Six.
And half an hour and a half, is that?
Yeah, I think that's good.
An hour and a half? You'll be at six o'clock? Okay, I'll send her the email. She's doing the financial report, yeah. It's Tuesday, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So she'll be here anyway.
Oh, now I know why they paint, still why they paint. Seriously.
Okay, let's start rolling. Welcome, welcome everyone. One and all, one and only all. First up is the update on the dockside agreement. I'm not sure why it says update. I think we've gone through this. Anyone have anything further to comment on that? Or can we vote on authorizing the signature of that, changing dates where needed? And I think there might have been one typo that you brought up, I think, or something, Fran, maybe? I know the date wasn't right on it. Besides that, is there anything else?
No, I think you're.
Is anyone comfortable voting on that?
Uncomfortable.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable.
Mm-hmm.
So if something, I guess other than I shouldn't authorize that. I'll make a motion for the mayor to authorize. I don't know if I can do that.
I'll do it. I'll make a motion for the mayor to make, no, I'll make a motion for the mayor to, um.
To authorize the mayor?
To authorize, to authorize the mayor to sign the dockside agreement with the village.
With parks.
For, with New York State Parks, if that makes sense.
Second. Lynn's second.
Any further?
No.
Uh, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Steve's gonna build a lookout on the top of that hill there.
Yep, very excited about this first.
That's cool. Poets something or other.
Is it? That's right, yeah.
Yeah, poets hold, or poets say something like that.
Have you ever been up there?
No.
Never have.
Yeah, I don't know why we were talking about it. It's like, it must be really creepy.
It's twice, it's twice the size of the field that surrounds it, that hill, on the picture anyway.
Okay, next is authorize sending the service termination letters to out of village water accounts that pass due balances. We do this every year. It's all of residents as it states, so that use our water supply outside the village that are delinquent. So I will make a motion to authorize the sending a service termination letter.
Can you turn the water off?
It's a letter threatening to.
I know, but do we have, do you have the ability to actually shut it?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Hey, just turn the faucet, man.
Not, not all of them.
There's some pretty big money here, I'm surprised to be.
Yeah, it's all the same owner.
Uh, the one owner that is.
It's an apartment building or something?
No, it's, it's the cabin on Route ninety, just south of the bridge.
Yeah, that's for sale, too.
Really?
I'm pretty sure it's for sale.
And this is constant, this rolls every year.
Yeah, that's like, uh.
Most of the money owed.
I didn't get a second on that.
Second. Fran, I did.
Fran has a second. I made the motion, Fran's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have a number of resignations. It's like the White House. That's because I'm, I'm like Trump. First is Mike Chaplow, who's been on the rec department for quite a while. I don't know how many years. But we have an email from Dave, I'd like to resign my position on the rec board. These past few months, I haven't been able to devote the time or resources necessary to do the job, and I feel it unfair to the village and my fellow members. Yours truly, Michael Chaplow. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Chaplow.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to thank Mike, 'cause he has been on a long time.
Yeah.
He was on when I was on, years before that.
Uh, next we have accept resignation letters for, first is Officer Rhonda Wallach. Rhonda is retiring from her full-time job. And according to state law, or public county law, or whatever law, she has to, what is it?
As state.
State law. She has to resign her position here and then reapply in order to be hired back. There has to be some separation. So anyway, let's see. Officer Rhonda Wallach will be retiring from her full-time job on February twenty-eighth and must be off of all public service payrolls from February twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth who adhere to the New York State Retirement System guideline. Pia Wallach will be terminated from her position with the Village of Colespring effective, uh, C O B, February twenty-sixth. Officer Wallach is requesting reinstatement to her current position as Colespring Police Officer on March first, that she can continue to serve the Village of Colespring and its residents. Right now, we're just addressing the resignation, so I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Zachary Langer, is it Zachari or Zachgurey? He doesn't know.
He doesn't know, he's not sure.
Zach has only been with on highway for about a year, I guess. Has it been more than a year?
No, no, I don't think it's a year.
Slightly, it's beginning of last summer, I think.
Did we front him stuff, did front him time to? What, he ever earned that?
I'll check.
Yeah, if you can't, check that.
We can give him some time, but I think.
Hi, Zachary Langer, am writing to let you know that March fifth will be my last day employment for the Village of Colespring. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Zachary Langer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Charles Norton, who we appointed recently to the Highway Crew Chief. Charlie has had an application at Haldene for quite some time, before I got here, from what I understand, so I feel a little better. Anyway, Charlie writes, I, Charles Norton, am writing to inform you that March thirteenth will be my last day of employment for the Village of Colespring Highway Department. I'd like to reapply for part-time position to cover water and sewer department on the weekends. Thank you, Charles Norton. Charlie has offered that he can work like half days for us if we need him, and would like to do that, so he's offered to do that. He doesn't want to put us in a total bind, so that's appreciated. He also works every other weekend at the water and sewer and wants to continue working on that, so. We'll be working on that and working with Charles. We do have applications out there for the Zachary Langer position, which we have four applicants so far. And right now Bugsy, Robert Downey Jr., will be taking over in the interim for the Highway Crew Chief until we decide what we're going to do with that position. So I've talked to both of them, and everything's kind of set for that. So I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Charles Norton.
Second.
Second from Marie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I want to say thank Charlie. Charlie's been here for quite a while, I think it's sixteen years or so, so I appreciate him staying around. We had kind of a rocky start, as everyone knows, with, you know, the hire of a different Highway Crew Chief, and then Charlie took over. So it was good working with Charlie, and I wish him all the best of luck.
Do we need to approve him for water and sewer, or he just stays on that?
Um, I think he, well, we'll have to talk to, I guess we'll have to talk to Michelle if he has to reapply or.
Well, it has been a different path then, you know, 'cause.
All right, let me square that away with, with Michelle. But I don't know if he's gonna be working this weekend, if we.
Maybe we can, we can push it through.
What's that?
We can push it through if you want.
All right, well.
I mean, if that's a separate position, he's not really resigned from that position.
That's true.
At separate salary.
Okay, I'll work with Michelle one day and get that together. If we need to make any, uh, to vote on anything or do it, or retire or whatever. Um, next is the update on the P V A contract, latest with Fran's additions attached.
Uh, yeah, this didn't go through with the adjustments, I'm, uh, memorandum. Do I make a motion first, or what do you have to do?
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, we can approve the contract. What was it, they were saying earlier, or?
We, we got the mock-up version from Judith.
Right.
Which implied that it had been sent to the P V A. We've not received any response back from the P V A. In reading through this memo, memo of agreement, and I apologize, but this is the first time I've seen this. It says that the P V A shall hold a ratification vote no later than March, blah, two thousand eighteen. It's not clear that that vote has been held, although you said that you had been told it had been held?
No, I didn't hear it without.
Jeff said that Larry said it had been ratified by the P V A, but I don't have a date, I don't know.
Um, so I'm not sure that, that this is something that, that can be signed at this point. It also states in number five, that in the event that the P V A ratifies the agreement, the village should then place matter on the agenda for its next regular scheduled village board meeting to be held no later than March twentieth, which says that we have to have the document in our hands by next Tuesday.
But it says then after ratification and approval by the village and the P V A does the actual new document. And I know I read that someplace. And the P V A shall prepare a draft contract no later than sixty calendar days after the successful village board approval, is in number seven. So once they ratify it, we ratify it, and then they come back with a draft new contract. And then I guess we would go through all in more time.
What does the contract say?
The original contract?
No, in number seven.
Um, they're gonna, my assumption is they're gonna redo the old contract, take out as they say, remove.
What does the old contract say?
There's this stuff that has to come out, like, you know, payments, payment charts, and.
But that's, that's in the P V A agreement.
That's in the agreement, which I assume is the contract they're talking.
Do you want to look up Judith, Mark, or, or, all right, we'll table it.
Yes, look up the Judith. Before we, just one thing on this, on paragraph number eight, the date in the beginning should be worked after June first, twenty seventeen, not twenty eighteen.
I'm sorry, Fran, can you say it again?
On paragraph number eight, second line, it's those employees who were employed and worked after June first, two zero one seven, not two zero one eight, shall be paid. This is for retroactive money. Village agrees that any and all retroactive money due and owing for any, okay, so that has to be changed from twenty eighteen to twenty seventeen, the June first date.
Was there something else that you caught?
It, it seems confusing to me. On that same paragraph, I thought the wording was very confusing, but, uh, both Michelle and Jeff told me that it was fine, so.
I read it, I thought it was the right.
Okay, so then I'm fine with it. I'll talk to you.
Okay, and if there's a date for this ratification, yes. Next, approved contract with public county for property tax preparation.
I'll make a motion to approve that contract.
I will second discussion.
Maybe it's the contract approved.
No, it's not.
I believe it's the same contract they do every year. But then we need a resolution for this, according to the contract.
So this has to be made into a resolution?
According to, according to the contract, yes.
Okay, so we need something different than this.
Right.
So we need to go back to.
Jeff needs it.
Lisa, okay, so we need, we need one minute as a resolution.
Does that mean the motion and second have been taken back?
Yes, we're taking them back.
Yeah, we need, sorry, taken back.
Didn't mean it.
We never quoted it.
So I guess I'll make a motion at the table until our next meeting, and we have more information, or to have a proper resolution. We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the storm recap. What much to say? Let's see, I think most, everything, most of the places were back online by Sunday morning. I had stopped by Campbell Avenue, which, uh, the lines down at the very end of Campbell Avenue were affecting Forge Gate and Constitution Drive and parts of Campbell and the Boulevard. So I did drive over to public county and got dry ice and water, because I had talked to the linemen there, and they said they were just finishing clearing trees off of it, and that linemen would be there and looking at what was there. I didn't think it was gonna be done for quite a while, so I went over. There was an offer that came late Saturday afternoon, saying that they had gotten dry ice, and it was available for a designated person to come over, pick up. So I called, went over, got it. By the time I came back, they had the electric back on. It's like an hour earlier, actually, or half an hour earlier. Apparently, they just, they just strung the lines. It's still, there's red tape down there, so you can't go around it. They haven't put it back on poles or whatever, so, uh, so that area was back on. The other area was the west, uh.
West Belvedere.
West Belvedere. Tree came down, and then it also ripped and broke a pole in half. So they were without power for, uh, that.
Ten o'clock Sunday night.
Yeah, so they were the last ones that I think.
Uh, the road is still not passable because the other utility lines are still lying on the ground. So, um, I've talked to the Highway Department, and there is a plan to plow the roads, um, plow the roads somewhat, if it's, if it should snow tonight.
Actually, Stephanie and I stopped at most of the houses there and saw if they needed ice or what, and some were just leaving and going somewhere else to stay for a while.
Uh, Marie, Horizon called the office today to say that they were gonna try to get someone to get those wires up off the ground. And Bugsy said that they would try to put something around them, so when they were plowing it, it would be plowing the cables up.
Cables are lying on the ground, so.
So they were gonna, they were gonna try to outline it with something.
But they, they're, they run across the road, it goes from Alastair's house to, um, Michael Smith's house. Straight across the road, so I don't know how, unless you jack them up somehow, or suspend them in the air, I don't know what else you're gonna do.
They'll plow up too many, there'll be a snowbank, and you turn around and you go the other way.
Yeah, that's what they, that's what they plan to do, Grandview South and West Belvedere West, a big, big bank, snowbank in the middle. And Jeff, thanks to Jeff, he took the initiative of calling Horizon today to see if they could try to expedite the cleanup of the wires.
It was one tree down that was leaning on wires, not electric wires on Pine Street. The Highway took care of that Monday. There is also.
Was it a village tree?
What's that?
Was it a village tree?
I, I don't know. I don't think it was. I don't think it came from the precipice tree.
'Cause, 'cause the one at Belvedere was not a village tree.
Right, yeah, this one was a village, it wasn't a village tree, I don't think. The other one, it was the Mirror Pools on Main Street, that was on private property also, so they're responsible for that. Mr. Mirror Pool was in, and said he would, you know, not happy about it, but he would take care of that tree. It was a huge tree that came across, uh, one down. There was one at the end of Parson Street, and that one they didn't get to, to disconnect the electric, so that was like a live wire lying across with the branches. People, some people thought, I guess, that we should have gotten that out of the way, but it wasn't disconnected yet, so that happened like late Saturday. I do have a Central Hudson storm update, which I will read. For your information, the news released below is issued this afternoon, that's today. We are planning to conduct a conference call on Wednesday at two P M. A confirmation email and call-in information will be sent tomorrow. Good luck and please be safe tonight and tomorrow morning. Thank you for your continued support. Preparations underway for approaching storm. Power restoration from Friday's nor'easter concluding. As power restorations are concluding from the recent nor'easter, Central Hudson Gas and Electric is preparing for a winter storm forecast to reach the region overnight. Central Hudson and mutual aid crews work throughout the day to restore electric service to the remaining customers impacted by Friday's nor'easter. As of four P M., nearly ninety-nine percent of customers affected by the storm have had electric service restored, and thirteen hundred customers remain without service. The vast majority of these remaining customers are expected to have power restored by tonight, and crews will continue to work on Wednesday as needed. Customers who have not yet reported their power conditions are urged to do so. In preparation for next storm, Central Hudson is able to retain most of the mutual aid workers currently assigned to the area to assist in restoring new service interruptions that may result. Weather forecasts call for heavy snow and wind gusts, with the potential to topple trees and cause power outage, outages. Said Charles Freeney, Senior Vice President of Customer Service and Transmission and Distribution Operations, long title. We're preparing a field force of five hundred fifty electric line and tree trimming personnel to respond to any new power problem. While this approaching weather system is not predicted to have as severe an impact as Friday's storm, we have prepared for what potentially may be a major storm. Customers too should be prepared to this, as this new storm approaches. He advised that residents, these are bullet points, pay attention to weather advisory, storm outage updates and/or shelter information. Change electric, charge electric devices in order to connect with stormcentral dot centralhudson dot com. Keep handy a flashlight and fresh batteries. Have a battery-powered radiator remaining. Inform the restoration effort. Confirm adequate package or canned foods that require no refrigeration or cooking. Avoid opening a refrigerator unnecessarily during outage, so that food lasts longer. Have a non-electric can opener. Keep an emergency supply of bottled water on hand for drinking and washing, and fill bathtubs with water as an added reserve. Central Hudson customers may report their power conditions and stay informed of storm and restoration status in the following ways, by text messaging. Customers should enroll in Central Hudson's texting program to use text messaging to report their power conditions and to obtain repair status. To enroll, visit centralhudson dot com slash alerts. On the web, visit centralhudson dot com slash storms to report outages and obtain restoration updates. Via smartphone, a mobile version of Central Hudson's website can be accessed by web-enabled cell phones and mobile devices at H T T P S dot mobile dot centralhudson dot com. Free Central Hudson mobile applications for Android and Apple are also available by logging on to centralhudson dot com slash mobile app. Through a social media like Central Hudson on Facebook, like Central Hudson on Facebook, and follow on Twitter, twitter dot com centralhudson. And Facebook is facebook dot com centralhudson. By phone, call the Central Hudson Power Line at eight four five four five two two seven hundred, or one eight hundred five two seven two seven one four. And please use the automated system to report, report or monitor your power condition. That's a little bit further. Residents are reminded to keep safety in mind at all times, stay at least thirty feet away from fallen power line and anything with which the lines may be in contact, such as trees and limbs, and beware of hidden or entangled lines in fallen trees. Assume all downed power lines are live. Operate generators outdoors only, and shut off the main breaker when it used to prevent, when in use to prevent electrical backfeed onto power lines to protect repair crews. Other safety measures include the following: Never use outdoor gas or charcoal, especially charcoal grills. I know Steve likes to do this, as he poses fire hazard. Over time, can give off deadly carbon monoxide gas. Avoid the use of candles for elimination due to fire hazard. Know how to open garage doors manually if using an electrical-operated remote control door opener. And lastly, operate cars and motor vehicles outdoors only and never inside a garage. For more information on preparing for storms and emergencies and communicating with Central Hudson, with Central Hudson is available at centralhudson dot com. For information regarding electric and natural gas safety, visit centralhudson dot com slash safety. And look at from them. Jumping to another topic, as my seat gets lower and lower. There was an email from West Point. People are always freaking out and going to Facebook when, when a couple of cannons go off, so. Tuesday, March twentieth, at approximately ten A M., there will be cannon noise and a military flyover in support of funeral operations. And that's all.
What time is it, ten A M.?
Uh, around ten A M., I said. Anything else from anyone else? Steve, did you contact the guy from the, for that, for the turbine? Was he gonna get back in touch or?
Oh, he's, yeah, he has to correct an M O U, and he's gotta get it back from, from Barbecue Energy.
Lynn did a bunch of research, and I think she gave it on the Big Belly breakdown once again. I asked her to do that, 'cause she's in a cut, and every time I go to a Fuhrtrill meeting, asks about it, are they interested in purchasing them or understanding what the costs are or leasing, so if everybody could take a look through that, that would be good. Do you have any thoughts on that? Maybe we, if they do one, maybe Hudson Highlands could do one. And maybe we could put one in the budget, so take a look at those.
So they're selling them now?
Yeah, they're selling them again for some, for crazy, crazy money now.
And the rental service option is, that's for service if you purchase, is that already net?
No, no, no. They, they call it the rental service option, is, is.
No, no, they, they call it the rental service option, is, is basically leasing the thing.
It's a what?
It's leasing the, the units.
Okay, so, it's twenty-five hundred dollars to purchase the cheapest unit and six hundred dollars to rent it per year?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we purchase it, Lynn, uh, what about service on that?
We don't get any.
Don't get any, so if it breaks-
We get a one-year manufacturer's warranty, but, um, we would be responsible for all the installation and maintenance and everything.
So, rent them, what's the commitment if we're renting?
Thirty-six to forty-eight months.
Yeah, um, the representative said that they have done some leases at thirty-six months, um, though it's rare. They don't really like to do it for that short a period, but we could probably do it for forty-eight, maybe.
Do they lock in the price or does that just fluctuate every year?
Oh, once, once we have the lease agreement signed with them, the price stays the same. And those prices in front of you are the current. There are some other fees that go along with it or expenses that go along with it, um, the bags, um, uh, we would also have to pay shipping and I haven't gotten accurate information on how much it costs to ship them here. But that should be coming down the pipe pretty soon.
What, what's the difference between, oh, I said, so, an SC is a non-compacting unit-
Right.
For recyclables.
Yeah.
HC is-
A high-capacity unit.
Is that for recycle, that's for trash?
No, that's for trash.
So, HC is trash.
An SC is standard capacity, fifty gallons.
So, sorry, SC is recyclables.
Yes.
Okay, and HC is trash.
Yeah. I mean, we can configure them however you want, but, yeah, but that's out.
They, they don't, um, comp- they don't compact recyclables, Lynn?
Um, well, generally, no, um, unless you get a lot of paper, unless you're doing a lot of paper, like, I don't know, some offices, maybe architects' offices or something like that.
I'm thinking cans and bottles.
Yeah, our trash is mostly soda.
Cans and plastic bottles, which we get on Main Street more than anything else.
Well, you can have one of the units that would have like a, a hole in the, uh, the front panel, but they don't compact, no. Well, I think it's soda, I don't think they would crush.
But it, it's, it's, from what I get from, from the representative, Andrew, I can't remember his last, Kelly, I think is his last name, is that the compactor doesn't really work very well if there's a lot of glass. So, you know, it's not really meant to crush glass into little bitty pieces, um, you know, it's just a regular-
So-
He was recommending to really deal with trash and, um, to use the high-capacity compactor for that and then a number of units of, for recyclables.
Well, that, that's the question, if the recycled, if the SC unit has no compacting capability, why bother spending twenty-five hundred dollars for something when we can use an oil drum? Like, I mean, it, it just, that's, that's a very expensive expenditure for no discernible value other than it, it, its capacity is fifty gallons.
Well, there is, there, there are certain values to it, number one, um, number one, it keeps bugs and rodents out. Um, you know, it's pretty much sealed up, um, and-
But twenty-five hundred dollars, a lot of money. I don't know that we have a rodent problem.
I understand, I mean, my thinking is the recyclables take up all of the space in the trash at this point.
I had a scene overflow of recyclables, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Uh, the corner of Garden Street and Main Street after a weekend, or even Saturday.
I mean, maybe, maybe not more than-
But I, but I don't know, is it, is that recyclables or the stuff that has, that's covered with food and food byproduct, which I don't know is considered recycled?
There, there are two bins there, there's a trash can.
And if people throw everything in both?
Yeah, yes.
People throw down recyclables, yeah.
People will do that, they're gonna mix them up anyway, people just tend to do that. It, it's an interesting concept, the, um, the bottom, the bottom of what the graphic wraps, Lynn?
Mm-hmm.
Um, can they be designed like, say, if you wanted to, you know, donate one of these or, or pay for the rental of one of these and you want to have GoPro pops around the site, can we do that, or is this just?
Mm-hmm, now, those, those, the wraps are generally used to kind of, um, identify it with the mun- with the municipality and also to make it more, you know, I was thinking to keep it more in keeping with our historic character. Um, they, the wraps are, you know, really vinyl wraps that are kind of sealed to the thing, um, and go all the way around. Uh, the ad- advertising panels, no matter which configuration you get, you can only get two of them. And those are, those are affixed to, to either side of them where, you know, you can put advertising posters.
So, we have to create our own advertising poster and just slip it in or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Take a look at that, and, I mean, I wouldn't, I would get some commitments from the non-for-profits first before I would consider, you know, doing one or seeing how that works.
I did email all the brochures with a lot more information to, to you all, I didn't print it out because it's a lot of color and I didn't wanna spend all my coloring on it, so.
So, what were they thinking of, of funding?
Um, I don't think they knew what costs were at all and I didn't know any and they change every other day, so.
Okay.
The next time I, I'll, I'll send it to them now and show them what's available.
No, we, we still have to plow on down, down, at the river, it's flooding, right? They, they have to be raised.
Yeah.
Uh, they can't be on the ground, and I don't remember.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I wanted to just, uh, contribute based on some research that I had done when I was on the village board, that with respect to the water and the flooding, um, Port Jefferson, um, actually, and Dave, you were with me. We went, um, we stopped in and we spoke with, uh, the clerk of Port Jefferson on the island and they have Big Bellies and they have trash compactors, um, I don't think that they, I don't recall that they have the recycling bins, but they did say that the trash compactors had, um, been damaged due to flooding, so they're susceptible and so they would require either, you know, elevation, like be in a location that's above flood level or be raised, so.
Oh, I'll get back to Andrew about that and see.
Some of my only questions about how, how the power's supplied.
Solar panels on the top of them.
So, if there's not enough charge in the battery, it just doesn't operate at, like, if you get crappy weather for a week or whatever, like, so, but there is no dedicated medical that we have to supply, okay?
If we're renting and they get damaged, do they replace them?
Yes.
They probably would replace them.
I like rental flooding, no?
I like rental too, get somebody to commit to a five-year rental, they're not so bad.
Uh, last thing is, uh, we need to discuss, um, is, um, is employment raises, um, for, for, for our employees. Uh, Michelle needs to know that number so she can plug it in. Discussion is open.
Ten percent.
Ten percent, Fran has ten percent. I have a feeling that's not gonna go over well, but-
Everyone received a two percent increase last year, but-
You mean for us, service?
Yes, they did.
Yes, of course.
In the year before, I don't think they received it.
There was nothing in that, right, so, two thousand seventeen budget had a two percent increase. The two thousand sixteen budget had a zero percent increase, the two thousand fifteen budget had an increase in it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do, does anyone remember what that increase was?
I don't, I'm sorry.
That was kind of done, uh, done deal when we took, when we took over.
I mean, I'm comfortable with two percent. Michelle gave us a breakdown here.
Steven?
Yeah, I, I think two percent is, is acceptable.
Lynn, what's?
I like two percent too.
Marie? I kinda ask.
I, I, I don't agree.
Okay.
She wants three percent.
The, I, I understand-
We can't go to three percent, Marie.
The COLA for two thousand, um, eighteen was two percent, um, but the COLA for two thousand seventeen was zero. So, um, I, I don't see a two percent increase as being commensurate with the current cost of living, given that there was a two percent increase last year. Um, so, I would go lower than two percent.
But wasn't last year's the, I don't know if I remember this right, to offset the cost of the, uh, added contributions to healthcare?
For some people it was.
That was in addition.
It was in additional?
It was in addition to the job.
But for other people it wasn't, yeah.
I mean, I loo- I look at these in terms of, you know, for, for the majority of people, two percent is like, what, sixty cents an hour, eighty cents an hour? Um, and I can't sort of get my head around that because I never worked on an hourly basis, but that just sort of makes me cringe. With some people, it's like thirty cents an hour.
That's not a lot of money.
It, it really isn't, and I know it, it comes out to a yearly number that we look at in our budget, but when you bring it back to what they get for a week, to me, it's just not a hell of a lot of money.
Um, from what I understand, if I remember correctly in Michelle's notes, she, um, the preliminary budget has a two percent increase in it, correct?
I think she was working with that number, waiting for us to come up with a, a year and a.
Well, like, if you take, um, like, regardless of what, whatever, I think, our foreman, he's a, it would be an increase of twenty-three dollars a week or fifty-seven cents or fifty-eight cents about an hour. Twenty-three dollars a week, doesn't seem like much to me.
Doesn't take your family out to, for pizza.
Okay, um, well, I'm gonna recommend, uh, two percent, um, so, we can vote on that. Um, I will recommend, uh, a two percent, uh, increase for the employees listed.
I'll second, is that a, is that a motion?
Yes, it is a motion.
Okay, then I'll, I'll second that.
Uh, further discussion? Uh, roll call vote?
Why?
I don't know, do you want a roll call vote?
Okay, I have no problem doing that.
Okay, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I?
Aye.
Against?
Yes, one.
One, okay.
Who seconded that?
What's that?
Uh, Fran.
I did.
Thank you.
That was us.
There it was.
I can discuss that with her. Anything else?
I think so, we're working on closing out the Main Street project, which, uh, documents need to be finished in the next couple of weeks, so that's basically what's going on in the office, in between the blizzard.
Okay, uh, garbage update, we're waiting for Jim, said he would get back to us this week, so, um, we don't know where that's at. We still haven't gotten a number, but, and anything else that we're working on?
The increases apply to all employees?
I think they're all employees.
Did we miss, did we miss anyone?
All employees listed on this sheet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who are we missing? Were we missing anyone, Marie?
I have no idea, I haven't looked at the sheet.
Well, some people won't be getting a raise 'cause they, well, oh, no, never mind.
Well, no, other positions are, the positions are here.
I think this is all.
Let me ask you, I have a question on Ed's, he does substitute, I assume he's gonna get the same as-
Who's that?
Ed Murphy, he substitutes at School Crossing, I assume he just falls in line.
I get it, yeah.
I guess, I don't even, I don't even know what he makes, he doesn't tell me.
He's hoarding.
He is, he's thirty dollars.
Uh, this, what is it, Thursday, we're having a, a joint meeting with the, this, this Thursday with REC and, uh, also, that's from seven? What time we're starting?
Seven o'clock.
Seven to eight, um, to discuss doc side and, uh, what else were we discussing?
Fee schedule.
Fee, fee schedule for use of parks, yeah.
And independence state, isn't that a?
And then eight o'clock or-
Eight o'clock is independence state.
Yeah, so, if anyone's interested in, uh, helping with the parade, please, uh, come down or give us a call, um, and join.
Actually, it's with anything having to do with independence state, right?
Yeah. We definitely could use as many volunteers as possible. And on that note, uh, anything from the, our dedicated staff, staff of reporters?
How many employees does the village have?
Uh, one, two, three, four.
In this list or in total positions?
Seven, eight? Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, some people, about fourteen, some people have two jobs that they're listed differently or two positions, plus us.
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Who did I miss?
Kathy, Michelle, Jeff, and the new foreman, um, Downey, Trimble, the new laborer, Tommy.
What were you adding, yeah?
Tom Herring, Carol Herring, Ed Murphy, Michael Mel, Ross Terry, or Greg Phillips.
Yeah, yeah, I left out the new, new foreman, new laborer, I figured out-
It's fourteen or sixteen?
Well, sixteen, what's that?
I got fifteen.
Well, I, I assume Bugsy is the new foreman, so.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I got fifteen also. Take, take a, pick, take a pick.
Okay.
Fifteen sounds good.
You folks, will you be getting a raise?
Haven't decided that yet.
No.
Marie's not-
I've decided.
Marie doesn't get it.
Marie doesn't want one.
We haven't got a raise fully because we're just gonna, no, we haven't put ourselves-
Do you think we should get one?
No.
I'm just in the process.
Running audience thinks we should get a raise.
Raise your hand. Uh, this doesn't apply to the police force, right?
No. They have a separate contractor. That's the PBA thing we discussed.
Contracts pending is two percent, two percent, three percent.
Yeah.
But there's also, there's give-back, so, I mean, those are the percentages, but there's, one other thing, there's no overtime at all.
Yeah, we thought that was nice.
It's less set, about the same, so. Any help? Yes? Yes?
No, I'm sorry, we're done.
I just have one comment, I, I wanna thank the board for, um, the giving the employees two percent. I know that it wasn't unanimous, but I think it's the right thing to do, um, yeah.
Thank you, and if anyone's going on vacation with me and Stephanie, we stop in at municipal offices for fun, check out Big Bellies. We base our vacation around places that are big.
Go to some town board meetings, we go, yeah, right, yeah.
No, we actually haven't done that, but we have spent holiday time in Minnesota, I mean, it's all our, I mean, we're assessing them all.
Yeah, they, I take pictures of Big Bellies and all kinds of permit signs and stuff like that.
Motion to adjourn, thank, all in favor? Thank you all.
Good night, all go home before the snow, stay safe. You know, taking snow pictures tonight, tomorrow?
Oh, I expect so.
What are they talking, fifteen?